I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to open the meeting with a moment of silence for Jeri Dorr. Jeri was a member of the Council on Aging. She is extremely well-known in this region for starting the Opportunity Works program in Newburyport. She's very philanthropic. It's a great loss to have her pass. So I entertain a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is to receive public comment, to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the Select Board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the Chair. The Select Board will not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the Chair. Do we have any public comment tonight? Come on up.
Tony Matthews, Main Street.
Hi, Tony.
On the old business, you're going to have a discussion tonight?
Yes.
Is that going to include citizen discussion, like a couple of weeks ago during the Lock and Road hearing? Not hearing, but discussion?
Possibly. Yeah, as long as you're not asking us to, you know, form an opinion or something that's not, you know, not on the agenda, not at this point, but I would think so. If you're asking us to answer any questions that you have, is that what you're asking me?
Well, just if there's going to be discussion with the tax pay.
Is it going to be a discussion like this? No. This is a meeting of the Board, of the Select Board, and we're going to discuss what the space needs, the Council on Aging Space Needs Assessment that was presented to the Board back in June. We're going to have a discussion on that. We're going to have a discussion on the town hall building project. And we're going to have another discussion on social media policy. Are we going to sit down and ask everybody here, you know, what do you guys think? What do you think we should do? That's not going to happen, no. This is a meeting of the Board.
Right.
All right.
Just the plan that's been presented by the COA that was approved by the COA. Is that a, that's a two-story building, right?
We'll discuss that when we get into this. You're talking about this here? All they approved was the floor plan, how much space they need. There was no building approved.
Right.
That's all.
Well, the floor plan contains stairwells, an elevator, a...
There's pictures of that, but this is just, we're just talking about the space for the Council on Aging.
The layout isn't concrete.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. Jim Moran on Elm Street. I had two issues. One, the agenda format of the people talking early in the meeting was instituted when COVID came along, and it was good reasons for that. It would appear to me now that that should be dropped and we should revert back to the way we've always done business, where you let the people in the audience talk and have good communications with the Board as necessary. The second issue would be, why wouldn't the Council on Aging be using the existing town hall? It's been sitting there empty for six or eight months, and those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Yeah, I got one quick then. Mike Bowlin, Bar Street, Byfield. Are you ever going to have a discussion set up so that people in the community can get involved more with what's going on here?
We have, there's two things that the town government does. One is a public hearing, and that's when we post a public hearing and we come to hear the public. But all these other Select Board meetings, Planning Board meetings, Board of Assessor meetings, all of those meetings, they are meetings of the elected boards and appointed boards in public. We don't engage, or you shouldn't be engaging in conversation with the Board. That's not, that's not how the democracy works.
Perfectly fine.
It's similar like the Senate. If you look at the state senate or even the federal senate building, you can, people can go watch them up, you know, you can go in at the Senate, at the United States senate and watch them happen. But you can't stand up there and say, you know, oh, excuse me, I think I want to say this and I want to say that. It's just not appropriate, and it's the same thing with the town.
Do you have any plans for an open meeting that's for both sides to discuss this?
When we have a public hearing, absolutely.
Is there anything scheduled as far as a public hearing, or don't you have enough information yet?
I don't have enough information yet.
Okay.
When the time comes and we necessitate a public hearing, yes, we absolutely will.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any more public comment?
I'm concerned for the...
Evelyn, just for the record, can you just state your name and...
Evelyn Noes, Byfield. And I'm concerned that the 10,000 square feet for a senior center is overbuilt. Initially, when the assessment needs group met, we put together a plan, and it was based on facts and figures taken from national, and...
Is this what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it here.
And when the director and the Board met with the architect, she gave him her wish lists. And at that time, the director was a new hire with no background in COA and building centers. She did as she was asked, though, she made a wish list. But there should have been more research into the elderly we are providing for. We have a unique situation here in Newbury with our elderly, with the three towns. And the director has been working very hard with programs and deserves a lot of credit for the, for her performance. But we need to determine how many elderly will actually use 10,000 square feet of space. I believe we need someone trained to do a study. We need to know the basics, but we need to know more about the participants. I was told, build and they will come. But now I believe that we need to take a closer look. We need to take a look at the generations. There's actually four of them, Generation X, Y, Z, and the baby boomers, and to find the common thread. And we need to look at the social and economics of our groups of elderly. If there are elderly people living in a higher income bracket as opposed to a lower income bracket, is that going to influence the needs and therefore their choice of participation? I think we need research. I think if we do research, we'll find the baby boomers are an informational group. They're a technical group. Their need is for advanced information. Just as we have the SHINE group, for example, that is a person who's professionally trained in that area and addresses that one need. And we need people like that that are trained to provide information and how to obtain it. And I don't think that's going to be a volunteer. I don't know the answers, but strongly believe that we do need answers. One thing I'm certain of is that we do need a senior center, but do not want to make a mistake in overbuilding and therefore overtaxing the elderly. Let's take a look at the build, who we are building for. If we find in the research we have a potential in 20 years for a larger complex, maybe we factor that information in, in the form of an expandable structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is report of the chairwoman. I signed the PR 2207 for Julie O'Brien and the VW 22-08 Staples Bill. Grants, gifts, and donations, there are none. Public hearings, there are none. New business. We have a new business license approval for North Shore AAC LLC, DBA Michelle Britt Thompson, 65 Newburyport Turnpike, speech and language therapy evaluation consultation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Julie, everything's in order, right?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed it expires in 2022. This is the first business license. I've noticed that we've extended through 2022. Is that because we're just getting it now?
Yeah, Leslie did ask if that would be acceptable because we're just getting it in October. She'd have to start in December again for the whole. So she said she would adjust the fee appropriately for the couple of extra months for this year.
All right, okay, great. All right, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the next item is the Select Board to vote to allow Boards and Committees to go back to electronic format if they choose. So we have had requests from several Boards and Committees to go back to Zoom format. I'm going to entertain a motion from the Board to allow the Chair of each Board or Committee to determine after polling the members if they want to move into the remote Zoom format.
So moved.
Second.
Now we can go into discussion. Currently, the Commonwealth currently allows Boards and Committees to meet in remote format until April of 2022. The Zoom format will be changing so that the Board and Committee will be the only visible participants unless someone not on the Board is speaking during a public hearing. Do you understand what that means?
No.
So currently, when you go, when we've been through Zoom this past pandemic, when you look on the Zoom, it'll be us, Board members, and then the public, whoever's dialing in is interspersed in between that.
Right, Hollywood Squares.
Exactly. So they're going to, there's a setting, I guess, there's a new setting in Zoom that, spotlight setting is what it's called. And it's going to only put the Board members so that you'll know who you're dealing with. So for the assessors, it'll just be the assessors, whichever Board or Committee you're doing it. And when it's a public hearing or they need comment from somebody, whoever's running the meeting can move, put the spotlight on that person, and then that person will like come up to the front. And then hopefully it'll be a little more clear when we're doing our public meetings. Each Chair of Board or Committee will need to schedule time with Matt Cooper, the IT Director, for training on how to do this method. I'd like to remind each individual Board or Committee that, to make sure that they do it legally and correctly to avoid any posting issues that may turn into any constructive approvals accidentally. It's mostly for the Planning Board or the COMCOM for the ZBA. The Select Board will remain in-person format for now. There is a remote participant format that all Boards can use. That's this, we approved this a couple of years ago, I think, 2017. But the Board of Selectmen authorize the use of remote participation at all future meetings for all municipal Boards. Minimum requirements are members of a public body who participate remotely and all persons present at the meeting location shall be clearly audible to each, to each other. A quorum of the body, including the Chair or in the Chair's absence, the person authorized to chair the meeting shall be physically present at the meeting location. And members of the public bodies who participate remotely may vote and shall not be deemed absent. Remote participation is allowed when physical attendance is made unreasonably difficult due to one or more of the following: personal illness, personal disability and emergency, military service, or geographic distance. The following methods of remote participation are allowed: telephone, internet, satellite-enabled, or videoconferencing, or any other technology that enables the remote participant and all persons present at the meeting location to be clearly audible to one another. Each municipal Board shall determine the method of remote participation permitted at its meetings, and the following procedures must be followed when a Board member participates remotely. Any member of a public body who wishes to participate remotely shall, as soon as reasonably possible prior to a meeting, notify the Chair or in the Chair's absence, the person chairing the meeting, of his or her desire to do so and the reason for, in fact, supporting his or her request. At the start of the meeting, the Chair shall announce the name of any member who will be participating remotely and the reason under 940 CMR 2910-5 or his or her remote participation. This information shall also be recorded in the meeting minutes. All votes taken during any meeting in which a member participates remotely shall be by roll call vote. All members participating remotely may participate in an executive session, but shall state at the start of any such session that no other person is present and/or able to hear the discussion at the remote location unless presence of that person is approved by a simple majority vote of the public body. When feasible, the Chair or in the Chair's absence, the person chairing the meeting shall distribute to remote participants in advance of the meeting copies of any documents or exhibits that he or she reasonably anticipates will be used during the meeting. If used during the meeting, such documents shall be part of the official record of the meeting and shall be listed in the meeting minutes and retained in accordance with the open meeting law. So we have this anyways, so. So we've had a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or any further discussion?
Yep. So you're saying that the Board of Selectmen cannot be Zoomed, is that what you're saying?
Currently, right now, we're going to stay in-person meeting.
Okay. Can you stay in-person and also give the option of having Zoom at the same time?
Well, not only Zoom, you can do phone too.
Allow people to participate or be, you know...
If we're going to go into a hybrid model?
Yeah.
No, probably not right now because we have difficulty with that, with sound and voices and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So until that's cleared up, right now, we're going to stay in-person.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem staying in-person, but I would like the opportunity or the ability to be on Zoom so people can watch.
As the winter progresses, we may eventually go that route.
Yeah.
If the COVID numbers continue to climb. So that's always a distinct possibility. But right now, as of right now, we're going to stay in-person.
Okay. And also, there was a, one of the people who did public discussion, it reminded me, we haven't, or we've discontinued the monthly or bi-monthly Meet the Selectmen. Why can't we go back to doing that? I mean, I thought that was very, very good for the people. I enjoy doing it. Why did we discontinue it?
I just think it fell by the wayside. I mean, I think it was a great idea, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, we should do it.
All right, you know what? Let's add it, let's think about a format, and we'll add it to the next agenda. Okay, so, any further discussion? So, you want me to read back the motion? Do you want Julie to read back the motion, or are we ready to vote?
Yeah, read it back.
JR moved to allow the Boards, Committees to go back to electronic format if they choose, seconded by Jeff.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that's, that's the Zoom. Okay, so now we have the Council on Aging Space Needs Assessment discussion. So recently, in conversations with Cindy Courier, at the Director of the Council on Aging, it was brought to my attention that there were several of our seniors that were reluctant to participate in in-person, in-person programming at the center located at Newbury Elementary School. So specifically mentioned was the concern of being exposed to unvaccinated individuals and the potential to expose unvaccinated individuals while using the shared hallway space on the way to the adult-only bathroom at Newbury Elementary School. So currently, the Council on Aging shares an adult-only bathroom and needs to traverse the hallway to the bathroom with all students and staff that are attending Newbury Elementary School. Now, the Council on Aging provides an essential service to our students, I mean, to our seniors. And the current COVID-19 pandemic has had an isolating effect on our senior population. It is essential that we have a facility in which our seniors feel safe and welcomed during the current pandemic and what's coming beyond. Because I believe this is a pandemic that's moving to an endemic, and this is not going to go away anytime soon. The Town of Newbury recently received ARPA, which is American Rescue Plan Act funds. They have grant funds which were recently accepted by the Select Board. When thinking of the best use of these funds, our seniors in the Senior Center immediately came, came to mind. With over 2,000 seniors living in Newbury, I reached out to both the Town Administrator and Cindy, the Council on Aging Director, to see if moving our Council on Aging to a safer location would be an appropriate use of these ARPA funds.
Man, how much is, are we talking about for this grant?
We've, we accepted $2.1 million in state grant money.
Oh, okay.
With all that being said, okay, that's what it is, is why it's important, why I feel it's important that this is under these COVID days. Tracy, can you, I've asked the Town Administrator to look into if this is feasible. I haven't heard all the details yet, so can you please share with us what you've learned?
Yes. So at the Chair's direction and in consultation with the COA Director, I did some research into understanding, you know, how we may be able to utilize our ARPA grant funds to address some of our COA COVID-related concerns as well as the additional space needs concerns, at least on a somewhat temporary basis. So the demonstrated need for additional space that was so thoughtfully detailed in the Expansion Committee's report has been, as we all know, further exacerbated by the social distancing requirements brought on by the pandemic. During these times, it's, I think it's even more imperative that we have a very vibrant, functioning senior center in order to help combat what you had described earlier as the isolation that many of our seniors have experienced throughout the pandemic. So although, you know, we're not looking to abandon in any way our pursuits of a permanent solution for the senior center, potentially, we think that a move to Kent Way may provide an alternative solution for the short term. And when I say short term, I'm thinking of somewhere between three and five years and would provide many of the items that were identified in the Expansion Committee's report. We're looking at an additional 2,200 square feet of space, additional parking, handicapped accessibility, a covered outdoor area, a reception area, supply and storage areas, I think that Cindy had identified, a large assembly and a multipurpose space, kitchen, which you currently do have, room for fitness and arts programming, offices for the staff, and a private office area for consultations in clinics and, you know, including future COVID vaccine clinics. So ultimately, what we, we would want our senior center to be widely used by, you know, some of our more than 2,000 seniors in town for things like meals and nutrition, as Mrs. Noes had mentioned, advanced information, programming like insurances, taxes, social security programs, health and fitness, transportation services, social and recreational opportunities, as well as educational and arts-related programs. So we see this as, as an opportunity to accomplish this and ensure the safety of those who wish to participate in those programs. And if the Board wishes to move forward with this proposal, we'd be looking to encumber somewhere around, I would say, 550,000 of the 2.1 million, which would include cost to lease the space for, you know, being conservative, up to the full five-year period, retrofit the space to the COA's specific needs, outfit the space with necessary equipment and furnishings, and move from the elementary school location over here and pay for the various networking and technology needs. I would caution you, although we've received updated information regarding the interim final rule and all of those things that a town may be eligible to spend the money on, preliminary discussions with the Office of Recovery have indicated that this would be an allowable expense. I ran it by Town Council as well, and she said I thought it would be an allowable expense. But the rules are changing frequently because we were awarded the funding and there were no regulations that came along with it. So it's, it's unfolding. I get new information almost on a daily basis. So again, assuming it's an allowable expenditure, which as of right now, I, all indications are that it is, our grant funds, the ARPA money therefore, would provide us with the funding we need to address the issues during the public health emergency and then beyond during the time when you could conduct those surveys and those studies that, you know, Mrs. Noes had just, had mentioned to give us the detailed information of what you would ultimately need for a final build-out in the future.
Fabulous. Well, I'll entertain questions from the Board.
Do we need a motion to discuss?
Well, I guess, I'll, all right, I'll entertain a motion to support the Council on Aging move to a safer location where more people can participate in their programming.
So moved.
Yep, seconded then.
Okay, discussion. Jeri.
Right. Well, this is, is all brand-new. I haven't heard a word about this, so I'm a little surprised at it. I'd like some more information about where, where at Kent Way? Where are they going to be doing, proposing this? And, you know, I guess I would be a little bit happier if, and I asked the last time we approved the grant, what was the plan? And it was told, there's no plan. So, I mean, we've got this money, you know, we need to plan, plan its use.
So let me answer that. As far as the ARPA monies go, there is, there is no plan. All the municipalities and the Commonwealth are in the same, actually in the whole country because it's federal money, are in the same boat. So when I was at the past MMA Fiscal Policy Committee meeting, they were having this discussion. And they're talking about purchasing recreational opportunities for their communities like public pools, splash, splash grounds, playgrounds, external outside opportunities because of the COVID pandemic. And as the Town Administrator, I think in Lakeville, had said, all these municipalities are trying to fit a square peg into a round hole because the federal government hasn't given the guidance as what you can use this money for. Here's the money, use it for, to mitigate any COVID-related issues. So I started to think about our elementary school. And I had a conversation with Cindy, and she was saying how there's a lot of seniors don't participate because they're just not comfortable. They're frightened going into the school with the unvaccinated, and they're frightened two ways. They're, they're frightened, they don't want to pass something on to a child, and the child is unvaccinated, and it's the other way around. And they have to share the hallway. This is only, this money, it's only a quarter of what we have, of what the Town was allocated. So I think if we can, if we can drive it and support our seniors, I think it's a great use of funds. And the, doesn't, and when you come into the building down here, I don't know if you remember, when you walked into the building on the right-hand side, there's a vacant space? That's the space.
Form a ransom space.
What is ransom engineering?
So, I mean, the two, the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Council on Aging are here. I don't know if we want to weigh in on this?
Certainly.
Oh, now it's my turn.
My name is Joyce Maturis.
My name is Joyce Maturis. I live at Five Sunset Road in Newbury, and I am the Chairman of the COA Board of Directors. And I think this would be a great opportunity for us to have a larger space, to see what we can do and what our seniors will do with the space, that there'll be activities, things for them to do. Hopefully, we'll have more luncheons, activities that they can have room for. When I went into this space, I was told that walls were going to come down and make a larger space for exercise room, and then there's a lodge room where we could set up tables, and it's going to be a kitchen so we can provide luncheons. And I think it's such a good thing to be able to do this for our seniors and know if there is going to be attendance before we go ahead and, just like Evelyn said, spend a lot of money on something that we don't know if it's going to be used. So I would really like to move ahead with this and keep the numbers. And then after a few years, whether it's three or five, with what's happening and with Cindy as leading this, she has so much energy and so many ideas, I think it's the best thing that could happen to our seniors right now. And there's always going to be the problem, well, it's too far away. Nothing's ever going to be perfect, but it's a start. And I think I support this very much. I know I do.
Thank you, Joyce.
You're welcome.
And this isn't a permanent solution, this is just a place for us to get them out of the school for now.
Well, I guess, do we have any information if, if they in fact use this half a million, $550,000, which, in my book, that's, that's not, that's, that's serious money. Do we have any idea if they put it downstairs that there would be seniors who would in fact come? Because I'd hate to use up that money, you know, and, and have a, have a nice place and still have no seniors coming to use it, so.
That's, that's okay. The, the work of the Expansion Committee that Mrs. Nois was, worked on, they identified over 2,000 seniors. Will they come? I don't know, but I think we have a better chance of them coming where they feel comfortable and get out of the house and avoid the isolation of going into the school and having to go to the bathroom and mingle with unvaccinated is just, I think is just too, too frightening for them.
I also think, Alicia, that there was conversation on the dangerousness of driving in certain locations that were discussed. Now, this is a long driveway, very easy to turn into parking spaces, it's very, very, very safe, there'll be assigned senior parking.
Yeah.
I mean, there's an awful lot that this area, plus the ability to interact with other adults during the times of sending out envelopes, and it's just, you know, it's an opportunity for Cindy to grow the program, to see where we might take it, when we, when we, when we outgrow this, where we're gonna go.
So can you explain, I don't know who, if Cindy wants to explain or Tracy wants to explain how the layout will be downstairs? Who wants to take that? You want to take that, Cindy?
Cindy Courier, Director of the Council on Aging. So when I went and took a look at the space, when you walk in the little reception area there, there is a wall that has a pretty significant storage area. I'd like to open that up a bit, we don't need as much storage space as what's currently there. I'd rather utilize the space for seniors to have programs like Joyce was talking about. There are, I want to say, seven offices along the windows. We would knock down two walls, so three offices would then become one room. That room could be used for exercise programs and art class, whatever, smaller kind of a, smaller program going on while we have the big room as well. A private office for our outreach coordinator, who does deal with a lot of private personal information. So right now, three of us are in cubicles in one big room, which is our activity program room. So it would provide privacy for the outreach coordinator, program coordinator, and myself. And then another office, like I think Tracy had mentioned, for consult room. Blood pressure clinics, we're doing a flu clinic the end of this month, beginning of next month, provide private space for that, would also allow us to have our shine counselor come in, have private interactions with people when they're discussing their insurance, things like that. There's a small kitchen area, right now I'd sort of classify it as a break room. We'd like to make it a functioning kitchen so we could not only have meals catered, but could prepare meals there as well. And then the small storage area. That's pretty much the space.
And do you have any idea, have you gotten any input from any seniors who do use the current school? If the location was changed, would they in fact come?
I have not addressed that with, I wasn't sure how this was going to play out, I didn't want to.
I'll take that one. We didn't know if this was even feasible. I didn't know this was feasible until the Town Administrator looked into it. So we've been kind of a little bit kipping this, playing this one close to the vest until the Select Board could meet and decide whether or not to support it because if I, if that got out and it wasn't an allowable expense, it would just be heartbreaking. So, the Town Administrator has looked into it, Town Council has looked into it, it's allowable, the federal government has rubber-stamped it for now. My concern is because it's COVID-related, if, I mean, I would like a vote of the Board tonight to support this move. Once the Board votes, they have a vote on record, if a year from now or six months from now the rules change, well, at the time the Board voted, the rules were the rules. It'll give the town a better light to stand on, I think, abusing that, that money. As far as that, how to spend that $2.1 million, it is extremely specific to COVID. It can only be used, if it was just to build a town hall, let's just say we want to take that money and build a town, a town hall, that's not an allowable use. What makes this an allowable use is it's removing the high-risk senior citizens, senior citizens out of the elementary school with unvaccinated people and keeping them distant. So, you know, because they can't socially distance in that hallway, and that's why this is almost, I want to say it's like a, a square peg fitting into an oval hole because it's not quite round.
And it's gratifying to hear how there's enthusiasm for this spot, and most of the time we heard the negatives of the other location, so.
Well, what was this, what did they say about parking?
What did, who said?
RJ always said that they would designate specific parking areas all along the side where the windows are for the offices there.
Where the ransom people used to park.
They would make that for seniors. And they also said if the members of the Board of Selectmen wanted to go and tour the site, they'd make it available for you.
And I mean, if Cindy ever had an event, if the Council on Aging, Joyce had an event, there's also all that other parking up the other side, you know, you could park thirty cars, forty cars.
Right across from the door as opposed to our handicap spots or around the corner.
So have you been in there, in that space?
I've been in there, I've been in there before, yes.
Before? Have you been in there, Jeff?
I've been in there before, too.
Have you been in there yet? So you need to make a point to go down, have, coordinate with Tracy.
This is the first I've heard of it, so why would I go down there? I'm, I'm just.
Well, he, you were in there.
I was there for other reasons.
You were there for, when it was ransom? Yeah. So, coordinate, now that this is gonna, you know, coordinate with her and go down and walk, or if you want to go with Cindy.
I'm happy to walk through.
Coordinate with Cindy.
I guess, I just, you're saying, oh, like I'm remiss in not going down there.
Oh, no, not at all.
This is the first I've heard, I've heard of this tonight.
We had potentially looked at that site a couple of years ago for expanding town hall, that's why they've all been in there.
I was never in there before. So anyways, any other discussion, any other questions? Thank you, Cindy. JR?
Alicia.
Not at this time.
John?
Talking from a public safety perspective, this wasn't this.
Yeah.
The location, the venue, I'm very, you know, encouraged by the prospect of it because with the exercise rooms that, you know, they're proposing and such, it'd be very desirable to have medical close by if it was needed, and with, right over the overpass is the rescue right there and also areas right in the back, so the response time to any emergencies here are very favorable. The interaction that would be encouraged with the, the attendees and town offices and town employees is, you know, I'm, I'm here back and forth all the time, and, you know, the, the elementary school current location right now doesn't really foster interaction.
Right.
But now, you know, hopefully it would be, you know, something more encouraging, people getting out to here, and it wouldn't be just about all the activities, but also be the interaction with, you know, town officials and, you know, and people that are just making their business here, too. So it'd be a convenience that way and the access. As Mr. Walker said, you know, that the driveway is very accessible, the road is very accessible, it's easily navigated and safe, so I think a lot of concerns might be dispelled and you might have a lot more involvement, just, you know, some of those things to consider.
Thank you.
John, we'll get the Council on Aging to have questions, we'll call it Stump the Chief, you know, and every week.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Can you further comment, JR?
No, I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity, and, you know, we disagree about a lot of things in this town, but what there hasn't been a lot of disagreement about is the Council on Aging situation isn't good, you know, especially since COVID hit. It wasn't great, it wasn't good great before, and COVID really, you know, compromised that site for proper use of our seniors. I think this is great, and having been fortunate enough to see the ransom space before, it's frankly much nicer than up here. There's a lot of rooms up here that are like a cave, and there's a lot of natural light, and I think, you know, I think once the participants get a taste of using that space, I think it'll be a good thing.
Yeah. Jeff?
Oh, I think we've summed it up.
Jerry?
Well, I, I just, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable taking a vote tonight because this is the first I've, I've heard of it. I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it, you know, I mean, if I'm not informed, I'm not comfortable voting, I'm not, you know, I, as an attorney, you have to do your due diligence, and I don't feel comfortable voting tonight.
Well, you haven't seen it, but the people that are going to use it are happy with it, so. The Council on Aging is happy, moving them out of the school. I, I mean, if we don't go this way, they remain in the school.
I'm, I'm just, you know, I'll abstain because I'm not, I'm not comfortable.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable voting.
That's fine.
It's, to me, it's a lot of money. I, I don't know if we're just taking this money and we're, you know, we're, we're blowing it, that it could be used better, resources for COVID, but we don't have any plans for the rest of this money or this money, you know, so I'm not comfortable.
Well, I think, I feel the Council on Aging and the senior citizens in our town are a wise use of the funds, so.
And it's, and it's time-sensitive, so.
It is time-sensitive, that's the thing. So, I will entertain a motion to support the Council on Aging moving to a safer location where more people can participate in their program.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay, Tracy, go forward and make it happen, please, the best you can.
No pressure.
The best you can. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, well, actually, I'm going to go back for a second. I know Jeff, you and JR, you both have seen it before when it was ransom, but I think it might be worthwhile for, to go when Jerry goes or at another time with Cindy, so you can see her vision because it's different, okay? Okay, so the town hall building, the town hall building project discussion. So the town hall, we already have a preliminary space needs analysis done for the town hall. So Tracy, I was going to ask if you could please work with Martha and update the document to be the latest and greatest so that you can get us to the next stage of this building Does anyone have any thoughts on that or any other?
Want a motion so we can discuss?
Yeah.
I move to direct the Town Administrator and the Town Planner to update the town hall space needs assessment to get us to the next stage of the town hall project. Does that sum it up?
Second.
Discussion. Well, I think we've already got a bunch of the work done. I just think, Tracy, what is left to do for that? Could you off the top of your head?
We'll have to take a look at, dust it off, take a look at it, make sure all the spaces are currently relevant, and then, I guess, schematic design, our feasibility.
Martha, I hope I'm not adding too much to your plate. Jerry, do you have any comment?
I mean, I think it's an opportunity for, town hall was kind of always on the slate in the beginning, and I know people are aware of the fact that money is getting more expensive. Materials have certainly risen, but the projections are that money will get more and more expensive, so, you know, some sort of adequate town hall on that site sooner rather than later at least makes, can't speak for the Board, but makes good sense to me.
I just want to keep the project moving forward. All right, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tracy and Martha. Okay, social media policy update. So Jerry has done the lion's share of the work on this, and she went and she did some research on social media policies, and I asked Julie to please print these all off for all of us so we could all have homework. That's for you. That's for you. Jerry, do you have these at home already printed off? Do you want them?
I already have it.
You already have it, okay.
But you can give it to me.
All right. And then one of these, can you put that in Mike's folder, mailbox, and then email him? It's there.
Excuse me.
So this is going to be like a lot of work, and I didn't want to extend the meeting any longer than we could, so I'm going to add this to our next agenda so we can go through that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve the, well, reapprove the 2020 reprecincting Newbury draft legal boundary description?
My understanding is nothing's changed, correct?
Well, nothing's changed. This is what changed. Remember when we approved this last time, we had all these yellow signs in it? Well, they weren't supposed to be there. So the Commonwealth sent them over to us with those lines there, shoreline, non-visible, whatever. So they gave us a clean copy with all those lanes, so we just need to reapprove, vote to reapprove this, and then sign this document, and they won it by Friday.
But the district lines is what I'm talking about, haven't changed, correct?
No, nothing's changed. Nope.
One quick question, has Town Council seen this? Has it been reviewed?
I think it was reviewed last time. Yeah, this new one wasn't reviewed, but it, like Alicia said, nothing's changed with it, it's just more like a format.
I mean, we could approve pending.
We can okay it, we can certainly okay it, and then Town, you know, with.
Just making sure that Town Council has an eye on it. But I met with the Town Clerk before the, tonight's meeting, and she said that that was just these non-visible, 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 shoreline, shoreline, stream river.
Elm Tree, Old Rock, yeah, wagon axle.
And she said they also had Newbury port spelled wrong, misspelled twice in the document.
I kind of like the old.
Okay.
Motion, do you need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion to approve and sign the second document pending review of Town Council, I guess, before Friday.
Motion to sign the Newbury draft legal boundary second, rendition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Town Administrator's report.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to let you know we have been successful in getting a firefighter gear grant award from the Commonwealth. We received $40,000 to purchase firefighter turnout gear, a vital tool in protecting lives and property of our residents. We generally replace them about every 10 years, if not sooner, and certainly Senator Tarr and Rep. Mira were very instrumental, as well as Chief Janverne, and getting, moving it through the legislative process. So that's $40,000 less that we'll need to appropriate out of our stabilization fund during next year's budget cycle. National Grid, we were successful in getting another $10,400 in efficiency incentives relative directly to the Police Department. relative directly to the police department facility. The Civil War monument cement base was repaired today, so that has been addressed. Tax titles were advertised. As of today, we only had six accounts remaining unpaid, which is an amazing recollection percentage. So, uh, kudos to the treasure collector. She's done a great job in keeping things on track, um, and timely. And just a reminder that the Harvest Festival, the library will be holding that on October twenty-third from ten to two.
Thank you. Any correspondence? We got in the annual operating report from Whittier Vocational Technical High School, and a thank you letter from Plum Fest Charitable, Inc. Um, the meeting updates. I have some. Does anybody else have any meeting updates?
Question. Could, could we get a report from, um, the chief on, on COVID?
Sure, definitely, very easy. Uh, nothing changed. Uh, we're still at fourteen, and that's still the look back, uh, but we're at fourteen, which is remarkable. Um, and, uh, there's been.
Fourteen positives?
Yes, it, it was throughout, throughout the whole town. Yep, and, uh, so it's, we're holding steady, very, very steady, so pleased to report that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Um, so I have a couple of meeting updates. One meeting update was the one I already kind of updated, which is the MMA. Um, I went to the Fiscal Policy Committee meeting. Um, I requested that this ARPA grant money be placed as a continuing revolving item on the agenda, because there's a lot of, um, uncertainty around what cities and towns can spend it on. They, uh, wholeheartedly agreed. Um, I will report back to that committee when we meet again in November that this is how the town of Newbury is going to be spending the money, so. I think that's a lot better than splash pads and swimming pools, is what I've heard people want to spend the money on. Um, also, there was a meeting of the District Communication Committee about Triton Regional School District. Um, the school put together a should I say it right? A comprehensive facilities assessment that, um, looked at the envelope, not only the envelope, but everything to do with Triton, and made a, has a recommendation here of different phases, phase one, two, three, and four. Um, and fa- in the tw- the, the three towns, Newbury, Raleigh, and Salisbury, need to come up with a way. Yeah, so scope one is seventeen point nine million, scope two is thirteen point six, scope three is twenty eight point nine, and scope four is one point eight, one point eighty, and, um, we have to come up with a way forward. So, um, I've asked, this is not going to be Newbury's decision alone. I've asked the school administration, the superintendent, and the building, um, school building administrator, what's, what's his title, what's his?
Business manager.
Business manager, um, along with the, uh, finance committee, to meet with us on our first meeting in November, November ninth, so that we can get an explanation in this, and they can explain it much better than, than the school can do it. Brian's coming, and Kyle is the school business administrator. The, they get a post to FinCon meeting, and us, the sel- the select board.
Yep.
And then we'll hear it right from the, the horse's mouth. But this is a, this is a big project that's gonna encompass, it's going to be, it's going to be a long time.
Is it possible to get a copy of what you have in your hand?
Yeah. Did you not get one?
I do not.
Okay, I'll get you one.
Well, what else is new?
Well, if they were passed out. At the district communication meeting at Triton, um, that's an updated one. You might have, I thought I had brought ones back for all of the select board members.
Unless it was put in my mailbox yesterday.
The figure got updated, right?
Yeah, that's, that's an updated, the one, anyway, what you have, it's an old anyway, so there's a new one. And maybe by the ninth, there'll be another one, who knows?
Can't be.
So, I don't know. But yeah, I can have, um, the schools send them over and put one in every, every, did you, do you have, you don't have one, do you have one?
I have, I think I have something older that was just, um, on copy. I don't have a spiral bound.
Okay, I'll, I'll have them get one for all the selectors. Julie, can you do that? Can you email Brian's office and ask him to send over? I have one, so four copies. Of the latest. The latest, yeah, the latest updated numbers. And. And then we have a, a review of meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Good. And.
Alicia, that meeting that we were at when they.
The first one in August?
When they showed us, you know, when this draft was available.
Yeah.
Um, do you remember the name of the engineering group?
Yeah.
Habib or something.
Yeah, 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 that's it.
What is it?
Never heard of them.
Um, Habib and Associates.
Yeah, all right. Just thanks.
See, the final report was issued December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, was revised June thirtieth, and then again September fourteen, so.
And that school had actually been renovated once before, it's just.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
What happens to these type of buildings.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
You need warrants.
Warrants, warrant.
Motion to sign warrants?
Sec- a motion to sign warrants.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No executive session?
Nope. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.